Welcome to the Monday, April 19th, 2021, virtual session of Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Honorable Mayor Pendleon?
Here.
Alderman Morris?
Here.
Alderman Karas?
Here.
Alderman Rommel?
Here.
Alderman Notes? Alderman Pushlock?
Here.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Here.
Alderman Bushman?
Here.
Alderman Weber?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Biddy. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need to make the following formal statement in accordance with state statute. I have made a determination that it was not practical or prudent to schedule an in-person city council meeting because of the COVID-19 pandemic, which is why this April 19th, 2021, city council meeting will be held remotely. The first item on the agenda is comments by mayor. And I have two of those tonight. The first is approval of a resolution of appreciation for retiring HR Director Deshaie Kalmar. I have a resolution of appreciation. Deshaie has been working for the City of Lake Forest since 1982, which is 38-plus years. And as a result, the resolution has a lot of stuff to be appreciated. So, it's been wonderful working with her. So, whereas Deshaie D. Kalmar has been a dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since October 18th, 1982, whereas Deshaie Kalmar will honorably retire as one of the longest-serving employees in the city on April 30th, 2021. Whereas Deshaie Kalmar served in the following positions during her dedicated career: Executive Secretary, Assistant to the City Manager, Assistant Director of Communications and Personnel, and Director of Human Resources. And whereas Deshaie Kalmar had the distinguished honor of working with 13 mayors, three city managers, seven police chiefs, and six fire chiefs, and has worked with well over 4,000 employees in the City of Lake Forest throughout her career. And whereas Deshaie D. Kalmar established the city's Human Resources Department, promoting a culture that encouraged and enabled employees to thrive and achieve excellence while preserving the city's core values and balancing their personal and work commitments. And whereas Deshaie Kalmar personifies the city's values of respect, excellence, integrity, and trust, and whose empathy and firm hand in addressing personnel matters in the city made her a respected colleague and confidant to many. And whereas Deshaie D. Kalmar embraced and promoted continuing education and improvement in herself and fellow employees, and championed funding for educational benefits and training at all levels of the organization, and promoted a culture of health and financial security for the benefit of employees and the city. And whereas Deshaie D. Kalmar served on the Illinois Public Labor Relations Association Board of Directors and Training Committee, the Charmed Foundation, the Midwest Leadership Institute Advisory Board, Family Services of Lake County Board, and helped create the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Benefit Cooperative and Northern Illinois Risk Pool. And whereas Deshaie D. Kalmar served as Secretary for the Board of Police and Fire Commission, Liaison to the Personnel Compensation Administration Committee, and established the Lake Forest Employee Benefit Wellness and Safety Committees. Whereas Deshaie Kalmar served as the city's lead negotiator in multiple employment contract negotiations with police, fire, parks, and public works unions, striving to promote equity and fairness while balancing the wants and needs of the employees with the fiscal constraints of the city. And whereas Deshaie D. Kalmar was awarded the 2005 Northwest Municipal Conference Bright Ideas Innovation Award, the 2017 IPELRA James Baird Leadership Award, the 2017 National PELRA Pace Center Award, and the IPELRA President's Award for contributions to the HR profession. And whereas Deshaie D. Kalmar will be sincerely missed by her friends, colleagues, former elected officials, and board members, and the legion of former employees who now live comfortably because of her vision, wisdom, and unwavering commitment to those she cared so deeply for. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Lake Forest, that the council on behalf of the administration and residents of the community hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Deshaie D. Kalmar for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Deshaie with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the April 19th, 2021, meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. I would ask for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rommel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Pushlock?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
8808, motion carries.
Thank you. Jason, would you like to say a couple of words?
Yeah, I certainly would, Mayor. Thank you. Before I begin, Deshaie, can I ask you to turn your camera on? You can't hide from us, even if we're on Zoom. There she is. Hey, John. Well, thank you, Mayor, and I have to say it's hard to believe this day has finally come. I knew it was, but had sort of been lamenting it. And really, you know, I've given a lot of thought to how one summarizes 38 years of accomplishment in just a few short minutes here. I think the resolution certainly did a wonderful job. And we could spend all night talking about Deshaie's professional accomplishments and the accolades, which are really easy to quantify. You know, coming into the organization just a couple of years ago, it was evident to me, and we could certainly spend time tonight, you know, discussing Deshaie's critical role in helping cultivate the culture of excellence that really exists in our organization. You know, being a workplace that I think demands high performance, yet is able to have fun and not take itself too seriously is a very hard balance to strike. And Deshaie has really helped us find that sweet spot. And I think that's evidenced by the fact that most of our employees who are hired here choose to stay and spend, you know, the rest of their careers in Lake Forest. But when I was really thinking about this and trying to put into perspective Deshaie's impact and legacy here in Lake Forest, you know, one thing that really stuck out to me was a conversation that the two of us were having with a retiring employee earlier this year as we were conducting one of our excerpt interviews that we always do for departing employees. And this employee was reminiscing on their career with the city and acknowledging some of the highs and lows they experienced. And I think to be clear, there were a few bumps in the road along the way. But what struck me was this person telling Deshaie, you know, "Even though I may not have agreed with you along the way, it's clear to me now with the benefit of hindsight just how much your actions helped shape my life and my career." And that conversation has really just struck with me ever since. Because, you know, for all the professional accolades Deshaie has rightfully earned, I think it's the unspoken positive impact she's had on literally hundreds and hundreds of people's lives in our organization that is her true legacy. And, you know, in the field of human resources, at the end of the day, isn't that really the whole point? And so, you know, I imagine as she takes time to try to reflect as her career's coming to an end in Lake Forest and recount all of those individuals and those interactions, she'll likely never fully appreciate just how many lives she's impacted. And I think that more than anything is a testament to her remarkable career of achievement here. And so, before I conclude my comments, I'd also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the incredible support Deshaie's provided me on a personal level over the course of my two years on the job. You know, needless to say, it would have been pretty easy for her a couple of years ago to say, "You know, I've been here for 36 years. I don't know if I really have the interest or patience in dealing with a brand-new city manager." I probably wouldn't have blamed her. But I can just say, I think, one, her desire to stay through that transition, I think, is a testament to her loyalty to this organization. And also, I'm just remarkably glad she did for my own benefit. She's been a remarkable asset to me personally during my time here. Her advice and her guidance have been critical to helping me transition into this role. And I think, as I mentioned at the council when I announced the retirement news last fall, she's also been willing to give me the occasional kick in the rear end when it was needed to. And I really appreciated having someone willing to do that. So, you know, I think, I look at this year in particular, and it's amazing. We really did not let her transition quietly into retirement. You know, she spent her last year helping us navigate the organization through a global pandemic, something none of us had any experience doing. But I note that because she deserves an enormous amount of credit for her role in developing all of the safety protocols that have largely prevented the spread of any COVID transmission in the workplace, which really in turn allowed our entire organization to seamlessly continue providing services to residents despite, you know, the remarkable challenges that it all entailed behind the scenes. So, I think in so many ways, this year was a final and fitting capstone to a career filled with so many successful efforts to keep this organization high-performing. And through a lot of actions that aren't always seen to the general public, but are absolutely critical to the success of the organization. And so, Deshaie, on behalf of the city and all of our employees, thank you for all that you've done to make Lake Forest such a special place to work and for all that you've done for all of us personally to make us better employees and better people. You're really going to be missed. I know you won't be far, but truly, we wish you, John, and Chris all the best in your next chapter of life. You've certainly earned a break here. So, with that, Mayor, before I turn it back to you, we do have one, an additional special guest joining us tonight. As I noted, I've only had the pleasure of working with Deshaie for two years here, but our next speaker spent 28 years working with her here in Lake Forest. And so, it's really my pleasure and honor to welcome back someone who needs no introduction at a Lake Forest City Council meeting, our former city manager, Bob Kylie. Bob, are you with us?
Good evening, everyone. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for allowing me to be part of this celebration tonight of a very special person. You know, back in 1982, I was the assistant to the city manager, and one of my duties was to interview the candidates for the Executive Secretary to the City Manager position. And it was my recommendation back those years ago that we not hire this candidate named Deshaie. Now, keep in mind that one of the reasons I think I made that recommendation was because I was really afraid that if we hired her, she'd never leave. And see, I was right. Who in their right minds stayed one job for 38 years? Only Deshaie. Well, it was exceptionally good thing that John Fishbach didn't listen to me or take my advice. And as fate would have it, that his decision helped me down the road when I came back to Lake Forest, and Deshaie made sure I didn't make any other dumb personnel decisions when I returned. You know, as Jason said, there's very few individuals who've had a greater influence or impact on the lives and the wellbeings of the thousands of City of Lake Forest employees than Deshaie Kalmar. He's had the perfect temperament and personality for the position of the Director of Human Resources. He's extremely caring, smart, ethical, loyal, dedicated, empathetic, and at times brutally honest. When necessary, she would tell me, not what I wanted to hear, but what I needed to hear, but always in a professional way. You know, it was because of that that it kept myself and many other department heads out of trouble. Whenever she would come into my office and close the door, I knew that I was going to experience another teachable moment from Deshaie. Her intellect and instincts kept me and others out of trouble because when we wanted to make decisions based on strong emotion rather than doing what was legally and morally right, she was there to correct us. Now, Jason, I was smart enough to retire before Deshaie. Sorry, you're on your own, buddy. Good luck. But I was able, I was very fortunate and able to work with Deshaie for 28 of her 38 years. But I am forever blessed that Deshaie will always be called my friend. Congratulations, Deshaie. You've earned it. And I wish you, John, and Christopher all the best in retirement.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I'm happy to turn it back to Mayor and council if you'd like to make any comments. Otherwise, I know we're not letting Deshaie off the hook tonight without hearing from her, so...
I was going to add one thing to Bob's list of great talents that I've witnessed coming from that pleasant demeanor. She can be amazingly tough when needed. And that's a hard part of that job, but one that she handled very well. Think about dealing with, you know, union negotiators. Not always the easiest thing to do. So, we will miss you. But Deshaie, do you want to say a few words?
Yes, if you'll indulge me for a couple of minutes, I'll try and get through this, that ugly crying or anything like that. Mayor Pendleon and members of the city council, thank you for the kind remarks and recognition. And I also appreciate those who jumped in on the Zoom meeting from their personal time. I've worked here for a very long time and seen a lot of changes. Put this in perspective. When I started, we did not have personal computers, but we used IBM display writers and shared information on eight-inch floppy disks. Some of you may have to Google what that is. We didn't have cell phones, email, or the internet, and we certainly didn't have Zoom. Times have really changed. The city's been my second home and my extended family for more than 38 years. I've developed great friendships during this time. I met my husband here, and we raised our son as part of the community. Together, this city family has been through happy times, celebrations, tough times, and everything in between. I have seen current and former employees' children grow up to become employees themselves, and in some cases, their children are now employees as well. That's staying a long time, folks. That's all I can say. What's important to me is the people I work with, and I have been so fortunate in my career. I've worked with three city managers, as we've discussed, each of whom impacted my career in various ways. The first was John Fishbach, who saw something in me, pushed me to get my MBA at Lake Forest Graduate School, and placed me in the HR role when I had no experience. The second was Bob Kylie, who challenged me to always work to make the city and myself better through constant improvement and continual learning. And finally, Jason, who immediately placed his trust in me and in turn allowed me to help him learn the history and traditions of the city while orienting in his new job. To each manager, I am so appreciative for your encouragement and trust. I've worked with so many wonderful employees at all levels in the city throughout my career, far too many to mention. I do have to give a shout-out to the various department heads, both past and present, who helped guide this organization. You're a wonderful blend of personalities and expertise, and it has been a pleasure to work with you. I want to recognize my own HR team. Carla Ward, who was with me from the beginning as we began to figure out what we were doing and started to reinvent the Human Resources Department. Sarah Lee Schmidt helped us keep it all together. Jamie Nixon joined the team and still helps us out whenever we need her. Lauren French, who is beginning her career and has an incredibly bright future. And Amber, who will take up the reins as HR Director. I have so enjoyed watching her learn and grow and am extremely proud and happy. It's going to be awesome. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my husband, John, and son, Christopher, for their support through the years. You can only imagine what it's like to have both parents who work in the public sector. Sometime, the dinner time conversations became very interesting. And finally, in the words of Lee Iacocca, "Your legacy should be that you made it better than when you got it. It took nearly 38 years, but mission accomplished."
Thank you, thank you, Deshaie. That was wonderful. And as were all of the 38 years. You actually outlasted me. I didn't live in Lake Forest when you started working for the city. So, and I've been here for 30 years on my own. So, but God bless you and your family and enjoy your new life. You can ask Bob, maybe call him up and ask him how it is. Most of the people I know love it, so...
I'm looking forward to doing things at my own rate of speed. Thank you.
Any other, anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
Well, I would just say, I've only been on the council for four years, but I've been watching the municipal operations for a long time, and it's been very smooth. And the labor relations have been especially smooth. So, I know that you have been hard at work all that time. So, thank you, Deshaie.
Just to add, like Jed, having been on the council for four years and known you for that time and prior times on committee work, and understanding the job that you have as Director of Human Resources, you can look at the results. We talk about how impressive our staff is, how we have such a quality of excellence there. Think about it. You know, who is doing the hiring? Who is doing the recruitment? Who is doing the training? Who is doing the educating? Who is doing the guiding? Who is monitoring them? Who is motivating them? Who is compensating and rewarding them? Who had a handle in all those decisions? The Director of Human Resources. So, and a tough job, and you've done an excellent job, and a heartfelt, well, thanks to you for all that.
Deshaie, my father, when I shared with him that you were retiring, he just shared with me how he has the utmost respect for you, all of what you've done for the city, and really, there's big shoes to fill here with you retiring. And just, I wanted to share his congrats and mine. And I'm sorry we didn't get to work together, longer together, but I feel like my whole life, you've been working for the city, and it's such a great place to be. So, congratulations, and I'm looking forward to working with Amber, who I know you've worked with and have a lot of strong feelings that she will be so successful. So, thank you so much for your contributions.
Well, well, Deshaie, the city runs well because of the people who run it, and you've played such a role in helping all of them achieve such a level of excellence. You will be very hard to replace. We go back a few more years than most people. We go back before you were working for the city and working at Gordon when I was on the board way back then. And then I know that you were in charge of HR when Mike was mayor, and I'm sure guided, helped guide him through some difficult times. And then everything comes full circle, and here we have been working together again for the last four years. Just thank you so much. You know, I hope they don't totally break your mold going forward because we could certainly all benefit from more people like you working in this industry and working in municipal government. So, thank you, dear, so much for all you've given to the City of Lake Forest in all of your roles.
Okay, well, thank you, Deshaie, once again. Enjoy your new life. Okay, next comment I wanted to share with everybody. Some of you may have heard, I think I mentioned this at a prior meeting, but it actually came to pass yesterday based on the initiative of a couple of volunteer citizens and about 150 other people. The City of Lake Forest partnered with Lake Bluff, Lake Forest Schools, and then the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Vaccine Buddies to hold a mobile vaccination event at Deer Path Middle School yesterday. There were over 400 doses of the vaccine administered. It was spectacularly well-organized. It went off absolutely without a hitch. The people from the doctor's testing center who work with the county to actually administer the vaccine were here. They've done this all around, both testing centers and also administering the vaccine. And it was, they were commenting that, you know, they learned some things from this experience. This was initiated by two women who live here in town, Mary Beth O'Shea and Nicole Phelan. Mary Beth called me one day and said, you know, they had been doing the Vaccine Buddies volunteer work. They had, they have now gotten about 1,400 doses or 1,400 appointments for people in town through the Vaccine Buddies effort. But she said, you know, "We're hitting the wall with some of the seniors. They can't, some of them won't leave their houses, and many of them won't leave Lake Forest. And we really think a community-wide vaccination effort would be a big help." And so, I talked to Jason, and Jason appointed Mike Strong to lead the effort. And Mike did a spectacular job of pulling together what was a very complicated logistical effort, coordinating Lake Bluff, the schools, the county, the testing center people, and about 115 volunteers who did various things, including greeting people, making sure they knew where they were going, taking people's temperature, you know, all the non-medical kinds of things that needed to happen. We were coordinated with police and fire, with HR. Deshaie made a significant contribution to this effort. I don't want to take as much time as it would take for me to read off all the names of the members of the city staff, but, you know, we had police, we had parks and rec, we had streets, we had building maintenance, we had human resources, obviously, and Dickinson Hall. And so, and then all the volunteers that were coordinated by the Vaccine Buddies principals. So, really, they have now, the Vaccine Buddies effort has resulted in vaccinations, or at least appointments for vaccinations, for over 1,800 residents, which is truly extraordinary when you think about the public health benefits of that. These are people who otherwise were having difficulty getting appointments or wouldn't or couldn't get to an appointment. People that didn't have email accounts, so they couldn't sign up. People that didn't have a computer. People that didn't have smartphones. It was truly extraordinary. And I just, it was, you know, it was a really amazing example of the community spirit that we have in this town, the spirit of volunteerism and philanthropy that really drives the quality of our life. And so, to everybody who was involved in that effort yesterday, and there'll be a follow-up on May 16th, the second dose, so they're going to have to do it all over again. But I don't know if any members of the council, I think we might have had one member of the council who actually got vaccinated yesterday. But it was quite... But it was it was quite a great, you know, just an incredible operation. And and, you know, again, special thanks to Mary Beth and Nicole and to Mike Strong from the city staff for really pulling a huge sort of diverse array of different groups together on pretty short notice. This whole thing came up about somewhere between three and four weeks ago as an effort. And so I just wanted to make sure that that did not go unnoticed. I know the people who got vaccines yesterday were quite appreciative and we're looking forward to a reprieve and, you know, we may now that they've done it once, you know, maybe it will certainly be easier to do it again. So so thanks, Mike, I think you're listening out there. Thank you and and to Nicole and Mary Beth, who really were the spark for all of this. Great job. Thank you very much. That concludes my comments. The next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. If you're trying to call, call eight four seven eight one zero three six four three or push the raise hand icon on your on your screen or your phone.
Mr. Mayor, we have no callers at the moment.
Mr. Mayor, we have no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on to committee reports. The next item on the agenda is a report from the Finance Committee, approval of the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan for fiscal year 2022, presented by Jed Morris, Finance Committee Chair, and Elizabeth Hollab, Director of Finance.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to do a few comments before Director Hollab starts her presentation. And just to follow up from the Finance Committee, I just want to reiterate what an outstanding document that the city manager and the director and the city staff have put together. It's really comprehensive and the depth of detail is really remarkable. You know, it gives you that financial look forward and looks to be a strong, balanced budget for twenty-one and twenty-two. But it also gives you a summary of what happened last year, which maybe residents remember, we had a very conservative budget because of the pandemic and it's come out quite well thanks to, I think, the fiscal management, but a lot of positive trends that were developed through the course of the year that we didn't fully appreciate. So it's been a very strong year. And finally, I want to comment on the strategic nature of the plan because each department, if you go to those sections, present a statement of what their objectives are for the coming year. So you really get a sense of what each department is doing for your dollar, for the residents' property taxes and the other dollars. It gives you quite a wealth of information to look at how we're managing the city and managing the operations on behalf of the residents. So Director Hollab, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much for the opening comments. Good evening, Mayor Panda Leon, Finance Chairman Morris, city council members. This evening, we stand on the finish line, culminating months of work by both the city council and city staff. The council's asked to consider approval of the fiscal year twenty-two Comprehensive Fiscal Plan this evening allocating ninety-two million dollars in resources to programs and projects throughout the Lake Forest community. I would just note that the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan document was made available to the city council on April twelfth, and it was also placed on the city's website that same day. So there has been about a week of opportunity for residents to view the plan on the website and hopefully have had a chance to look at it. So why do we call it the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan and not just the budget? Well, that's because the document provided for your consideration this evening is a lot more than the budget. This graphic shows the cyclical nature of the financial activities of the city throughout the year, in which we start out with long-term planning, looking at the strategic plan, the five-year CIP, financial forecasts, and the city council fiscal policy, moving to goals, identifying both organization goals, department objectives, and analyzing performance measures. And then looking at service level requirements to meet the services provided by city operating departments through the core elective service analysis and personnel allocation. And then we get down to the detail of actually putting the annual budget together, estimating revenues and allocating expenses. And then we start the process all over again. The Comprehensive Fiscal Plan is intended to be a one-stop for any residents looking for financial-related policies and priorities of the city. This graph just shows the the financial program timeline for the fiscal year twenty-two budget. You can really see that we're we're working on this throughout the year. But we really start the budget process in September with setting the budget calendar and looking at the fiscal policies. Then we move into the phase of working on the capital improvement program, developing the tax levy and fee schedule for the city council's review in the fall. We have our first budget workshop in November, focusing on the capital improvement plan fees and the tax levy. After those approved are approved by the city council in December, we develop target budgets for distribution to the operating departments. The departments prepare their budget requests in December and January. City manager conducts reviews with each department in early February. And then we're back to the city council finance committee in March to review the operating budget and any other outstanding items on the budget. It's a significant seven-month process. I couldn't begin to imagine the hours expended by both city council and staff in putting this together. And we've actually had seven meetings of either the city council or the city council fiscal finance committee to review various aspects of the budget and Comprehensive Fiscal Plan presented for you this evening. One significant enhancement in my mind that we made with the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan last year is tying it to the strategic plan. The strategic plan has six priority areas. And so we have used these icons to visually represent items throughout the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan document that relates specifically to the strategic plan. So visually, it's very easy for a resident to page through the Comprehensive Fiscal Plan and identify specific components of any of these six strategic plan areas. So we have, of course, continued that in the proposed fiscal year twenty-two plan. So before we move to fiscal year twenty-second and and or fiscal year twenty-two and as noted by Finance Chairman Morris, fiscal year twenty-one started out with a lot of questions. We had conducted the March budget workshop for fiscal year twenty-one just a few days before the governor's initial proclamation and shutting down. So we immediately went back to work, retooled the budget, had discussions with the city finance committee in April, and then approved the fiscal year twenty-one budget in early May last year without any understanding or expectation how deeply impacted the city and entire country would be by the coronavirus pandemic and without an understanding that it would be with us for such a long time. So I would I would note that we were served well by the city council's decision to put some very conservative projections in the fiscal year twenty-one budget. And fortunately, as we've monitored throughout the year, the city has done incredibly well despite the challenges of the pandemic. So really, across the board in all funds, the city is going to outperform those budget projections, which is great news. Focusing here just on the general fund fiscal year twenty-one estimates, we are projecting revenue to come in about seven hundred and fourteen thousand above the budget. And you can see there the specific areas that we're seeing both positive and negative variances, but generally very good news on the revenue front and expenses coming in, projected to come in at one point one million under budget. And so much of that comes from personnel expense, vacancy savings throughout the year. We budget full employment for the full year and tend to see some level of savings every year with the natural turnover of employees. This year, that that personnel savings is projected to be about five hundred and ninety thousand. Then you can see in a couple areas additional positive variances on the expense side. So as we discussed with the city council finance committee in March, we were projecting a surplus in the general fund revenues less expenses of seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And as directed to by the committee in March, we have added a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer to the capital fund in fiscal year twenty-one. And that will keep the fund balance at the same levels as we ended fiscal year twenty. We will be back to the finance committee in July with final FY twenty-one numbers. I anticipate that we'll see additional improvement based on the last few months of activity, but more to come in July. So turning to the fiscal year twenty-two proposed budget. So the citywide budget includes all funds of the city, which we'll cover in the next slide, revenues of ninety-two and a half million dollars projected for fiscal year twenty-two. This graph shows the distribution by source of the of that revenue. Property tax represents about thirty-five percent of the total citywide revenue projected for the coming fiscal year. Expenses included in the total city budget amount to ninety-one point eight million dollars. This chart shows the allocation of those by type of expenditure. You'll note that the three categories here salary and wages, pension, and other employee benefits total about forty-two percent of total budgeted expenses in fiscal year twenty-two. That is represented by personnel costs. This slide is really intended just to show the individual funds' relationship to the total citywide budget. So we are required under generally accepted accounting principles to account for all resources in specific funds. The primary reason for fund accounting in government is to ensure legal compliance with revenues that are restricted by use. So currently, the city has thirty-one individual funds that are listed across the chart. And then you see the budgeted revenue in blue and budgeted expense in red for the plan that's presented for your approval this evening. So as you can see, the general fund, the first column, is by far the most significant fund in the citywide budget. It is where most of your operations and personnel are budgeted. And so we tend to focus most of our attention on the general fund when we review the budget. So turning now to the general fund proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, we have a net operation budgeted of nine thousand two hundred and ten dollars. So it's a balanced budget, revenue of thirty-seven point six seven million and expenses of thirty-seven point six six million. Again, just showing the distribution of revenues by type. Here you'll see a much more significant reliance on property tax. In the general fund, fifty-six percent of the revenue projected in the general fund is through the property tax levy. An expense of thirty-seven point six six, you'll then see an additional focus on the salary, wages, pension, and other employee benefits in the general fund because so many of the employees are accounted there. The expense budget for the general fund is seventy-three point seven percent personnel cost. So non-personnel only represent about twenty-six percent of the total budget. Another item to note about the fiscal year twenty-two general fund budget is that during discussions in the fall of the capital improvement fund and capital improvement program, the recommendation of staff was to move some ongoing annual capital expenses out of the capital budget and into the operating budget. The primary reason for that is that these expenses are incurred every year and are more appropriately funded from ongoing operating revenues. So in the general fund alone, we moved seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the capital fund budget to the general fund budget for FY twenty-two. Absent that, you would have seen a projected surplus of about seven hundred and sixty thousand, but we would have been required to transfer that money to the capital fund to cover those recurring capital expenses. Another aspect that is somewhat unique in Lake Forest budgeting is the target-based budgeting. Sorry. So I mentioned on the timeline that we estimate revenues first. So we start out estimating the resources, preparing the tax levy and the fee schedule so that we know going into the expense budget development what revenue we have available to us. And then we allocate those resources out to the operating departments through a target-based methodology for their preparation of budget requests. What you see on this chart is an analysis of fiscal year oh-nine through the proposed fiscal year twenty-two of the non-personnel expenses in the general fund budget. So you can see there are required amounts. These are items like IT software maintenance and fleet expenses in the operating department budgets, discretionary contingency funding, transfers out of the general fund to other funds of the city, capital and one-time expenses that have traditionally varied from year to year in the general fund budget. But you can see the significant increase this year with that move of seven hundred and fifty thousand from the capital fund back to the general fund. And then non-personnel operating. This orange band is really the portion of the general fund budget that is left to the departments to allocate to their individual priorities. What you will note here is that the trend, the total of non-personnel expenses over time have stayed relatively constant. And in fact, the discretionary funds, the non-personnel operating expenses of five point oh-four million in twenty-two is actually less than the five point one million that was available to departments in fiscal year oh-nine. So this target-based budgeting has really allowed for limitations on increases in non- in personnel expenses in the general fund. Now we'll look at these expenses compared to the total budget in the general fund when we add personnel. So the blue band in each year is the addition of the personnel expenses on top of the non-personnel. So you can see, as we noted, the total non-personnel expenses accounting for about twenty-five percent, roughly a quarter of the total general fund budget, the remaining seventy-four, seventy-five percent being personnel. You can see that those personnel expenses have indeed grown over the fiscal year oh-nine to fiscal year twenty-two period. Specifically of note, what I think is very interesting is that this band shows the total full-time positions budgeted in each fiscal year. So since fiscal year oh-nine, the city has lowered staffing from two hundred and fifty-four full-time positions to two hundred and eleven positions proposed for fiscal year twenty-two. But the cost of those reduced positions is twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight million dollars compared to twenty-one point six million in fiscal year oh-nine. So the true budgetary pressure and the challenge faced by the city is this growing cost of personnel, which the cost increases are outpacing the revenue growth in each year. The next chart, this just shows a pie chart that takes the citywide expenses, so the total ninety-one point eight million dollars in expenses proposed for fiscal year two twenty-two, and allocates those by function. So in some cases, those are department or division budgets, so community development. In some cases, they're division budgets. So Public Works is broken down between administration and engineering, streets, sanitation, fleet, water and sanitary sewer. To give you a feel for how those expenses are allocated out to different functions, you can see here that the police budget of fifteen million and the fire budget of just under eleven point five million combined represents twenty-nine percent of the total citywide budget. The other significant bucket, if you will, in this allocation is capital. At twelve point seven million dollars, the capital investment, both one-time and ongoing, reflects about fourteen percent of the total city expenses proposed for fiscal year twenty-two. We've we've noted that the reliance that the city has on property taxes representing more than fifty percent of revenues supporting the general fund budget. But on the flip side, Lake Forest residents do enjoy the lowest property tax rate in Lake County. So this chart simply So this chart simply shows two thousand nineteen levy rates, which represent, is representative of taxes collected in calendar year twenty-twenty. These are the total predominant rates in, in Lake Forest on the left compared to other comparable communities within Lake County. So you can see the different total property tax rates. This is inclusive of all taxing districts that are assessing taxes in the individual communities. But a very good note that despite the heavy reliance on property tax revenue, Lake Forest has been efficient in its use of its property tax dollars. Also very important to note in the proposed budget are the capital asset investments. So as indicated on the previous slide, twelve point seven million dollars is allocated in the fiscal year twenty-two budget for capital improvements. These are some of the highlights. Of course, significantly of note is the Baroque Storm Sewer Project. This is a project that's been on the city's deck and having significant conversation over the last few years. The fiscal year twenty-two budget as it stands allocates four point three million dollars for this bu- for this project. As you know, we have, you know, been pursuing grant funding related to this project. And so the four point three million dollars is allocated based on the assumption the grant award is not received. But if the grant award is received, we'll be able to come back with city council to discuss this project in more detail. The project is not anticipated to begin until the fall when we're for sure, we know for sure whether or not the city received the grant funding. Other specific items of note include road sidewalk curb improvements. This is an annual investment this year budgeted at just over one million dollars. Storm sewer lining and improvements of one point seven million, bridge improvements of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, Forest Park Beef and Beach and Bluff. The three hundred and seventy-five thousand combined is money for a beach profile study through Parks and Recreation, as well as bluff stabilization design monies, both of which will be important projects to complete in advance of the city council's November capital budget workshop when we'll have a better assessment of improvements needed and estimated costs. Total operating capital, these are the amounts that have been moved to the operating budget. Seven hundred and fifty thousand moved to the general fund, a hundred and fifty thousand moved to the park and recreation operating budget, and a hundred thousand moved to the water and sanitary sewer operating fund. And then water and sanitary sewer improvements of one point two million and capital equipment replacement this year budgeted at nine hundred and forty-five thousand. I would also note that in addition to the Baroque Storm Su- Sewer, the city continues to pursue grant funding for a number of projects. So as you know, we do have three grant applications in for the ITAP program. And we will, at that point, if any of those grants are awarded, we'll be back to the city council to discuss allocating funds for the city's match for any of those projects. Finally, another important note, the city has employed long-term forecasting for a very long time. It allows the city to be more proactive in addressing budgetary challenges on the horizon. The general fund forecast has been instrumental in, in driving a number of budgetary decisions over the past several years. What you see here on this chart is not new, nor is it unique to Lake Forest. But because of the personnel expenses representing such a significant portion of the general fund budget, those, that growth in expense does outpace the revenues. So you see here revenues in blue, operating expenses in red. And, you know, in the forecast, within the five-year forecast period, you see that cross of revenues and expenses. This is not unique and this continues to be in the out years, three or four years, but does drive budgetary decisions on ensuring that that budgetary balance does remain on our mind and receiving attention to ensure a balanced budget into the future. The green line just represents fund balance reserves in the general fund. They are significant. The city has had a strong desire to minimize the impact on the city's budget of the state, state shared revenue. And so the city has allowed fund balance reserves to grow, to insulate the city from any reactive changes that are needed in the budget should something happen at the state level in Springfield related to the sharing of revenues to the city that goes into the general fund. So you can see that we do maintain a healthy reserve to, to offset any of those risks. So that completes my formal presentation of the comprehensive fiscal plan. Again, we do recommend city council consideration of approval of the comprehensive fiscal plan this evening. I will be happy to address any questions.
Any comments or questions? Just reiterate what Alderman Morris said before. This is a really impressive document. It's very easy to understand. It's very logical. It's, most people are just horrified at the idea of even looking at one of these kinds of documents. And I think, I think even a, you know, just a, a, a normal citizen could probably find their way through this pretty, pretty easily. So, so thank you for the, for the great job to the staff, to Jason, to Elizabeth for, for leading this, this effort.
Yeah, I just want to comment, I love the way you've tied this into the strategic plan. It's just brilliant. You know, for those of us on the council who are responsible for moving that strategic plan forward, it's great to see the resources that we're putting into those initiatives outlined in the budget. It's just fabulous. So thank you so much for that initiative. It's really helpful.
Okay, well, if there are no further comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the comprehensive fiscal plan for fiscal year twenty-two.
So moved.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rumel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes. Alderman Kreslak. Alderman Goshgarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance making a supplemental appro- appropriation for the fiscal year beginning May first, twenty-twenty, and ending April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. First reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. That will be presented by Finance Chair Morris and Finance Director Holland.
Sure, I will just make a couple of comments and then turn it over to the director. But this is where we're carrying over funds from twenty-one into the fiscal year twenty-two. And there's only a couple of items on this that need our attention, so Director Holland.
Certainly, thank you, Alderman Morris. We did discuss this briefly in the finance committee meeting preceding the council meeting, but for the public who may not have been on viewing this, while the city council approves the budget, the legal mechanism for authorizing the expenses presented in the budget and the comprehensive fiscal plan comes via the supplement, comes via the appropriation ordinance. You consider and approve that the first year, first quarter of each fiscal year typically at your second meeting in July. When we develop the budget, we ask departments to estimate their expenses either under budget or over budget. So we have a good feel for where expenses are going to come in at the end of the year compared to the appropriation ordinance. So in this case, we have two funds for which we are anticipating expenses to exceed the appropriation approved last July. So the first fund is the Laurel Western redevelopment TIF fund. This, as noted earlier in the evening, is actually good news because the property tax increment associated with the Laurel Western Avenue TIF is higher than the budget anticipated. Statute, the city is required to make payments to the school district sixty-seven and one fifteen for property tax increment based on a statutory formula. But we anticipate expenses exceeding the budget consistent with the increase in revenues that was not anticipated. So we are projecting the need for a two hundred thousand dollar supplemental appropriation for the TIF fund. The second item is the water and sewer capital fund. So in that case, we have some unanticipated expenses projected for fiscal year twenty-one. First was about eighty-five thousand dollars approved by the city council in September of last year related to emergency main break repairs that were required by the Public Works Department, approved by the city council and does necessitate a supplemental appropriation. The second relating to an item later on in your agenda regarding the purchase of property. And so that is related to the water, water system. And so that expense for property acquisition would be paid from the water and sewer capital fund, again, unanticipated when the fiscal year twenty-one budget was approved and necessitating a supplemental appropriation, in this case, of course, of a hundred and fifty thousand. So if the city council desires, you can waive first reading and approve an ordinance this evening making those supplemental appropriations. I'll be hands, happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Elizabeth? Okay, hearing done. I would entertain a motion to, to waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance, making a supplemental appropriation for the fiscal year beginning May twenty, May one, twenty-twenty, and ending in April, on April thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one. Leave, okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I think Alderman Weber was both, had both the motion and the second.
I wasn't sure if I was heard.
Yeah, so.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rumel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Kreslak.
Hi.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is the annual vendor approval presented by Elizabeth Holland.
Thank you, I'm almost finished. Included within city code provisions is a process by which the city council can approve specific vendors for the fiscal year as part of the budget adoption process. So included on page twenty-nine of your meeting packet this evening is a list of requested vendors for your consideration this evening. You will note that all the two categories are continued from last year's approved vendors. One is a change related to fuel purchases. So currently, Public Works Fleet Division will obtain bids with each order for diesel or gasoline needed for the city throughout the year. Those bids then go to the finance chairman for approval before the order is placed. All of this needs to happen within hours, but certainly the same day. And so we are recommending a change in the procedure for fiscal year twenty-two, which would involve including all of those vendors on the vendor list you're approving this evening with the notation that in aggregate, you're approving approximately three hundred thousand dollars over the course of the year and that the price quotes will be obtained with each individual order. That way Fleet can obtain the pricing, enter the purchase order and place the order more quickly. And we've reviewed that with the current finance chairman, he's comfortable with that change. Other addition for this year requested is Verizon Wireless, our current provider for wireless and cellular services currently receive those services through the state bid. And so for, based on the fact that the state bid will continue through fiscal year twenty-two, we're simply requesting the council approve that as part of the vendor list approval this evening. With that, I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, seeing no questions or hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion for approval of the attached list of vendors for fiscal year twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rumel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Kreslak.
Hi.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber. Eight yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a report from, or a recommendation from Property and Public Lands Subcommittee of the Council for consideration of a recommendation from the Property and Public Lands Committee in support of purchasing property located at fifty Maywood Road, waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance. This is going to be presented by Alderman Goshgarian and Kathy Cernyak, Director of Public Development, or Community Development, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that most of my fellow Aldermen are familiar with the property located at fifty Maywood Road, the former Joytime Preschool property. The property is just under a total of seventeen thousand square feet. Over the course of several months, the Property and Public Lands Committee has discussed this property and the challenges and opportunities it presents. Tonight, on behalf of the PPL, I'm presenting a recommendation in support of the city acquiring this property. The recommendation from the PPL was unanimous and based on several unique circumstances, which together made this property a strategic property for the city. Acquisition of this property offers several benefits to the community and they are as follows. First and foremost, acquiring this property allows the city to protect a twenty-inch pressurized water main, which was installed by the city in the nineteen fifty, is very close to the south property line of the Joytime property. The water main serves the Northmore neighborhood and protecting the city's investment is a critical, in this, a critical infrastructure, which as it relates to health and life, life safety matter. The long, narrow configuration of the property poses development challenges. Development of the site with one or more residential units could impact South Park and neighboring properties due to the tightness of the site. It's approximately, I, I believe Kathy, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about fifty feet wide by three hundred feet deep, if I'm not mistaken. Acquisition of this property offers the opportunity to maintain a buffer between the newly improved South Park and the neighboring homes, as well as the opportunity to think creatively about how this property might be used in the future to offer expanded amenities in this very well-used park. I want to express my appreciation to the property owner Kathleen Narvik, whose family operated the Joytime preschool for many, many years. The preschool served generations of Lake Forest families. Ms. Narvik negotiated with the city in good faith. And the purchase-sale agreement, which is included in the council packet tonight, beginning on page twenty-nine, reflects the agreed upon sale price of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. On a side note, the purchase-sale agreement, in that PSA, the city is going to be covering the closing costs. Clearing of the property included demolition of the structure, will include demolition of the structure, and will get underway very soon after the city takes ownership. If approved by city council tonight, we anticipate, anticipate the closing to be scheduled as soon as possible. For those who may be unfamiliar with this location of the property, I'll ask Kathy to bring up a vicinity map on the screen shortly. On behalf of the PPL, I ask for council approval on the purchase-sale agreement. I would be happy to answer any questions. If there are any legal questions about the PSA, they should be directed to our city attorney. And tonight we have Kurt Asputh with, with us. And he will be answering any questions we might have this evening. Kathy?
Thank you, Alderman Goshgarian. You should on your screen see a vicinity map, the vicinity map is also included in your packet. As you noted, Alderman Goshgarian, the, the property is an unusual configuration, fifty feet wide by about three hundred feet deep. I believe it's point three nine acres. It is located immediately adjacent to South Park and has the fifty-foot frontage on Maywood Road. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for either Kathy or Alderman Goshgarian? Alderman Bushman?
Yeah, question of clarification while we're looking at this, uh, plan of survey. You show in red the property equestrian, but there's also a blue comparable-sized property right below it. Is that, you know, separated or demarked for any special reason? Or is that existing city property as part of the South Park complex?
Alderman Bushman, it is part of the city property. It was, uh, based on the history, we can find this originally was a single, uh, unsubdivided parcel, uh, and the, the city did acquire this property, uh, decades ago, uh, from the family who owned the Joytime property, and the Joytime property remained all these years.
Okay, says others, no certificates. The second, uh, question I have is, uh, the Public Works Committee recently considered a proposed, uh, uh, contract with a design engineer for, uh, roadway access and parking lot facilities at South Park. Now, my impression is that arrangement is going to be focused in on the south and west side of the parks. Uh, but I want to confirm that the city's acquisition of this property would not change the plan to proceed with that, uh, parking, uh, roadway design work.
That is correct. Um, the, the Joytime property, uh, really is intended to serve as a buffer and perhaps provide an opportunity for a passive amenity in the future, but no parking, no roadway activity is proposed in that area.
Other questions? Alderman Rumel?
I just want to make a comment. I just want to thank the PPL Committee and staff and Kathy for, um, bringing this before the council and, uh, for negotiating this agreement. I think it's a marvelous, uh, addition to our park, and it, it also protects that important water main. Plus, it, it, uh, does some honor to a very beloved, uh, city institution, which was Joytime Preschool. And I hope that as this property is developed, we'll do something to appropriately memorialize its prior use, because it really was very important to a lot of Lake Forest families and children growing up here. So I hope we keep that in mind, and a special thanks to the Narvik family for negotiating with the city in good faith and making this available for this use. I'm just very pleased that this is moving forward, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. In that case, I would, uh, entertain a motion in consideration of a recommendation from the Property and Public Lands Committee in support of purchasing property located at 50 Maywood Road.
So moved.
Oh, wait a minute, you know what, hang on for a second. I need to restate the motion, sorry. Waive first reading and grant final approval of an ordinance approving a purchase-sale agreement between Kathleen Narvik and the City of Lake Forest, authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement, and directing the city manager to take all necessary steps to implement the agreement.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris.
Hi.
Alderman Karas.
Hi.
Alderman Rumel.
Hi.
Alderman Notes.
Hi.
Alderman Freshlack.
Hi.
Alderman Goshgarian.
Hi.
Alderman Bushman.
Hi.
Alderman Weber.
Hi.
Eight yay, zero nay, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may just also extend, uh, a note of gratitude to City Manager Wisha. He, uh, he had to step in, um, I shouldn't had say had to step in, but he was in the position where he was going to be the one that needed to negotiate and really worked hard to find a very fair and equitable resolution and, uh, respecting the family and all that they have done and being sort of, um, you know, new kid on the block. I think Jason did an excellent job, and I want to thank him for every, everything that he's done and, and respecting all parties and making this, uh, but was seemingly a very smooth negotiation. Thank you to him, too.
I appreciate that, Alderman, but truly, team effort on, on the staff level, obviously. Um, you know, Community Development Directors, Ernie X, been intimately involved, and as was, uh, Finance Director Hollab, Public Works Director Thomas, Recreation Director Sparthow, Assistant Manager Strong, there are a lot of people who had their hands in this, uh, over the last year.
Well, I'd like to second, uh, if I might, Alderman Goshgarian's comments. I've had a front row seat for this, and actually it dates back to my time as Finance Chair, uh, going back to 2011. So this has been an, uh, an ongoing issue. It, uh, it came to a very positive result. And it might not have been that way, uh, without some deft handling of, of really all the city staff and some, some good decision-making, I think, by, uh, by various members of the council over a long period of time. So, uh, so thank you, and I'm glad, I'm glad we can now add this to our, uh, inventory of parkland. And also, I would like to extend my thanks to the, to the Narvik family for all their contributions to the city over many, many years, and now, uh, you know, negotiating, uh, an agreement that, uh, uh, you know, allows us to move forward with this property and allows them to, uh, get on with their, with their lives, so. Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is, uh, a report from the Public Works Committee. Uh, it's approval of a recommendation from Public Works, uh, to award the Forest Park Bluff Slope Stabilization Project Design Proposal to Hay and Associates, Inc. in the amount of $144,889 plus a 5% contingency, in the amount of $7,244, for a total of $152,133. This will be presented by Jim Lockafer, Public Works Management Analyst.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I did prepare just a few short presentation slides on the topic that I will briefly review, and then ultimately, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. So just jumping right in, some, some quick background information, a little overview of the project history stemming back to last year specifically, uh, May 4th, 2020, about a year ago, City Council approved an agreement with a professional engineering firm, Hay and Associates, to complete a pre-design of the middle bluff area. If council recalls, as you're well aware, major projects have already been completed on the south end and on the north end. To stabilize these areas, this pre-design specifically focused on some middle at-risk areas that have been. As part of that pre-design process, Hay and Associates was charged with developing some conceptual design options. So this truly was a more of a strategic step back from the traditional move, uh, design process where we move forward with, say, if we're replacing a water main, we just jump right into the design to replace that. We wanted to develop some, some of those conceptual, um, options for the City Council. And so with that, uh, this past September, Hay and Associates completed their pre-design process and they outlined, uh, four options in a final report. Uh, staff spent some time reviewing that report in great detail with Hay and Associates. Then ultimately, at the November budget meeting, the Finance Committee Budget Meeting, a brief presentation was made to, to the committee on that pre-designed final report. This, this was the first time that it was brought back to, uh, City Council via the Finance Committee. Fast forward a couple more months, uh, prior to the topic coming back to City Council in much more detail, the city manager received a letter from the Forest Park Preservation Board that ultimately submit, uh, supported the comprehensive stabilization design option, which was, it, that was one of the four options presented by Hay and Associates in the report. And again, it was the most comprehensive. The Forest Park Preservation Board received the report in November, and they spent some time on their end reviewing it. And then also, uh, myself and Superintendent of Parks and Forestry Chuck Myers met with them in early February, along with the Senior Engineer from Hay and Associates, to review, uh, the final report in greater detail. And then the topic returned to City Council, February 23rd, if City Council recalls, at the Special City Council Workshop Meeting, where, where the topic was revisited in much greater detail. There was a full presentation on that pre-design report. Director Thomas, uh, provided some opening comments, and then ultimately turned it over to that Senior Engineer from Hay and Associates, where he really got into the weeds on what those four design options were and what they were comprised of. Ultimately, at that meeting, City Council provided staff with the direction to proceed with a request for proposal process to design that comprehensive stabilization design option. And then, most recently, this topic was reviewed by Public Works Committee, specifically the RFP process and the staff recommendation that was formed. You know, I'll go into that in a little bit more detail on this slide. So for this project specifically, we have a design budget of $250,000. The design includes the installation of retaining walls, some slope drainage, the restoration of all be constructed, uh, construction impacted areas with native seed and plant material, and then, uh, further failure risk analysis, as well as the identification of some construction phasing opportunities. And what that means essentially is if, we, we asked as part of this request for proposal process for the selected firm to identify truly more, more high priority areas and to offer some input if there are some phasing opportunities, meaning that if some areas are more high priority than others, if there is that opportunity to, say, phase construction one year, do those high priority areas, and then return the following year for those, those middle risk or, or lower priority, priority areas that will ultimately need to get done. And on the right-hand side of your screen, this was an image that was, was shared at that Special City Council Workshop Meeting as that Senior Engineer really highlighted these different design features, what they all entail. So as part of the request for proposal process, the public process that Public Works initiated, we did receive four proposals from professional engineering firms that are outlined in the chart on the screen, along with their proposal totals. With any request for proposal process, staff forms an RFP review committee that is charged with reviewing each proposal in great detail, and then ultimately, uh, forms a recommendation to move on to, and in most cases, Public Works Committee and City Council. The findings of that RFP committee, and I'll start with the true low-cost proposal that was received, GEI, while they came in, uh, much lower than our anticipated, uh, budget and much lower than the other firms that submitted, they failed to require some detailed cost information that was required as part of our request for proposal process. And ultimately, the review committee also found that they, they did not offer a clear design approach as well as, uh, didn't demonstrate a, a true understanding of this, this project. Which then leads to the next low-cost firm, Hay and Associates. And it goes without saying, with their, their experience and overall work with the pre-design, they obviously have significant experience in this area, as well as though it, it's worth mentioning, up and down the North Shore, it, they do bluff and ravine slope stabilization projects all over. This is truly something that they, they specialize in. And so with that, the Public Works Committee and city staff is requesting that this design proposal to stabilize, again, the, the middle risk areas of the bluff is awarded to, uh, Hay and Associates in the amounts that appear on your screen. And if awarded this evening, Hay and Associates would begin their design, uh, in early May, uh, May 3rd, that first Monday. And essentially, we have asked, uh, them to, it's part of the request for proposal process, to have their design cost estimate and those construction phasing options and opportunities substantially completed by mid-September, which in turn then will allow staff plenty of time to work with Hay and Associates in reviewing their materials. And then ultimately, as Director Hollab alluded to during her budget, budget presentation, we would take this information back to the Finance Committee at their, uh, November, uh, budget meeting to discuss the, a capital improvement program for significantly, really at that meeting, we would look for some direction specifically around, uh, construction phasing. So with that, I know that was fairly quick, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that City Council might have on this design proposal.
Just from the council? Obviously something we've seen plenty of, but, uh, it's an important project, and we wanted to make sure that it got the full attention that it deserves. Alderman Rumel?
I just wanted to be, want to be sure. I, I felt that at that workshop meeting where we talked about this, the council members there were pretty specific that we really wanted to look at phasing this in. I don't, you know, and the possibility that we may not even have to do the entire comprehensive project, that certain aspects of it may be sufficient. Um, and so we were going to sort of start out slowly and address the more heavily impacted areas, maybe shore those up with retaining walls and then kind of see if that held before we moved into another phase. I just don't want to get over our skis with this and bite off the whole enchilada if we may not need it. And I, I just want to be a little cautious, um, in that regard. That's my, uh, first question. Are we clear on that with the, uh, with the people who are, who were talking to?
Alderman Rumel, to, to answer your question, yes. Uh, this was a, construction phasing was a special component of the RFP process, and Hay, Hay and Associates completely understands that, a, as part of their design, they are to, to develop, uh, different options for construction phasing, which certainly doesn't mean constructing the project all next year. While that may be an option, uh, there will certainly be other options as well presented.
Well, all next year, maybe not at all in terms of some of the phases. If they are, if, you know, we find that they aren't needed down the road. I felt that we decided we'd go ahead and sort of, uh, design the whole thing, um, and, and save some, you know, some money in that process in case we do need to go ahead with the whole thing. But, you know, sort of take this in phases, see how it goes before we, uh, go ahead with a full comprehensive, uh, design proposal that, that was before us. So I just wanted to be, uh, you know, make sure we're all clear on that and, and we're all on the same page. The other question, and this is sort of a sidelight, is when you talked about staging, it, it got me thinking, where are we planning to stage this? Is it going to be in the parking lot down at North Beach again, or, or what are we thinking?
I think that as that is continued to be developed as far as design goes, that's going to be more clearly identified as far as what approach fits best, from the upper table land area, from the parking lot below. Obviously, a, a, as we review this, impacts to, the beach operations are going to be something that is vetted and taken, look at, uh, very, very seriously. So at, at this time, I can't say that there is a selected option for staging, but it's certainly something as, as it was for the North Beach Access Road project, that there'll be a lot of consideration, a lot of meetings with Parks and Recreation, police fire, multiple departments to make sure we, we select an appropriate option.
Well, and then my next comment sort of transitions into, um, Chuck Myers' presentation. You may recall when we repaved that North Beach parking lot, I, um, did raise the possibility that maybe there could have been some bio swales and permeable pavers incorporated into that design. And I do recall Director Thomas saying, "Next time we have to repave that, we will consider those options," but it was too far down the road and sort of a last-minute request for proposals because we weren't certain at that when we initiated the project. request for proposals because we weren't certain at that when we initiated the project that repaving that parking lot would be necessary. So I hope that we will take a good, hard look at those parking lots if and when we have to redo it as part of any of this design. And I also noted, I just happened to be at the Rosewood Beach in Highland Park to note that they are repaving their parking lot at the beach with permeable pavers, just FYI. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Oh, we'll get a look and see how that works for a few years before we try it. All right. Other questions or comments? Am I muted? No. Okay. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award this, the Forest Park Bluff Slope Stabilization Project Design Proposal to Haynes Associates, Inc. in the amount of $144,889 plus 5% contingency and the amount of $7,244 for a total of $152,133.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
AKA, 0 and A, motion carries.
Thank you. And the next item is somewhat related to the last, also from Public Works, or from actually Parks and Forestry, so, but this is a Public Works project as well. Approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award the Forest Park Beach Evaluation and Monitoring and Maintenance Plan Development to Smith Group in the amount of $95,067 plus a 5% contingency and the amount of $4,933 for a total of $100,000. This will be presented by Chuck Myers, Superintendent of Parks and Forestry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'll pull up the presentation. All right. Many of the aspects of the process in this parallel what Jim just talked to you about, so I'm gonna go over those pretty quickly. So with this project, sorry, let me, there we go. So just to give you a quick history, as you know, you're all aware of the challenges of the beach over the last few years, especially with the extended period of high water levels leading to record highs last year and the storm activity over the winter months. With that, we had an extensive amount of restoration last year at the beach and took a lot of time and resources to complete that. And with that, we came to you in November with the desire to do a beach profile study. It was a study that was on our CIP for a number of years before that, but we did push it up because we realized that pressure that we're seeing on the beach, we needed to get it done sooner. So we talked to you a little bit about it then, and then in February, we had a detailed presentation at the special City Council meeting. And at that time, you approved the direction to move forward with the RFP process. And then in March, this was presented to the Public Works Committee to review the RFP process as well. So the budget on this project was $125,000. I won't go into the details. I think we've talked about that quite a bit, but just to highlight what this project involves, obviously, this, I call it a study, it is an evaluation, and it's a development of a monitoring and maintenance plan for the beachfront. So there will be extensive study of the topographic features of the beach, the surrounding areas. So a lot of surveying going into that. That's why we want to get this going in May. By the way, this is something that we'd like to do over the summer months and have to do at that time. So the, and then with that, there is an extensive study of all the beach structures. That includes things like the breakwaters, the revetment walls, the groynes, which are the steel beams that extend out, and of course, the sand itself. All of those features come together, but the sand is what really does the work of protecting the beach. So all of those things will be studied. They'll be looking at the condition, especially after the last storms that we've had. This past winter, we were fortunate. There was a good ice layer for quite a few weeks that did protect our beach. So the previous year, as you know, we had a lot of storm damage. So there is some concern that we want to look at the breakwaters in particular and see how they've held up. So they'll study the way they look right now compared to when they were put in back in 1986. So all of that will be looked at. Then they'll make recommendations for ways that we can improve it. And as I've said in the past, I think that we've been fortunate with our beach. It is well-built. It was well-constructed, designed well. So we're very fortunate compared to other communities, but there are some areas that we identified that with the tests of Mother Nature over the last few years, it has revealed some things that we need to address. So they will look at making recommendations for restorations to get the beach back to the way it was intended to perform and any kind of improvements related to that. Of course, with this, there will be a regulatory review. This could involve the Army Corps of Engineers, could involve the DNR groups like that. It depends, again, on the activities that we decide to take on there. So it is very likely that there'll be some regulatory involvement. And then they will develop cost estimates for those recommendations. And then we also added in this time, the exploration of green infrastructure, or if you will, nature-based solutions. So we've asked, we asked through the RFP process that each firm let us know their history and their, what expertise they had in that as well. And then finally, the development of the monitoring and maintenance plan. So we did issue the RFP in early March. We received three responses, as you can see, AECOM, Smith Group, and Baird. All of these companies are well experienced in this. They have experience on the North Shore and all over the Great Lakes. They all have great qualifications on this. So we looked at, our team that was put together to review this, we looked at a number of other factors besides just the dollar amount. And as you can see, it was very close with the top two, AECOM and Smith Group, within just a few hundred dollars. So obviously, that was very competitive. So we had a number of criteria we looked at, and some of the things that really stood out to us was the expertise in the green infrastructure and that kind of stuff. That's not the, you know, that's maybe a small part of the project, but with companies that are, were this qualified for the work, we looked at how to distinguish which one would be best for this project and decided that Smith Group was the staff's choice for moving forward. So then, as I mentioned, we did take this to the Public Works Committee and let them know our recommendation. And with that, the next steps on the project are moving forward. If this is approved tonight, we would begin the study early May, and it would go through the summer months. And then the completed study would be ready for our CIP budget meeting in November. And then finally, staff did look also, I didn't mention this with the RFP process, but we did look at the firm's ability to help us with grant ideas. And certainly, Smith Group was a company that had a lot of experience in that. The others did too, but overall, we liked what their emphasis on this, and they will work with us on it. So we will, city staff will be looking at opportunities that are out there for grant funding. That will probably come in the, as we get further along in the study and as they come up with recommendations later in the summer. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have two quick questions. The first is, I have heard from a client who lives in Lake Forest as well, who has a home on Lake Michigan. They're doing significant beach renovation there on their property and working with Shabika. And they were recently shared the information that the lake level is down about 11 inches. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, it is. Actually, I usually just tell everybody a foot, but to be exact, it's 11 inches, which is great news. And as I mentioned in previous presentations, the lake level is very cyclical, and any expert that you'll talk to, Army Corps or anyone, will tell you that the lake level is going to go down, and it is, as predicted. So that is a great help to us. Hopefully, it continues on. And as I mentioned, this past winter, we're very fortunate. We don't have as much damage, but we do have a huge deposit of sand in the south cell. Once again, we are going to be moving some of that. So...
My second question is, in terms of where the funding for both this monitoring project versus the one that Jim presented to us on the design plans, are those coming both out of a certain fund? Or can you comment, is one coming out of Parks and Forestry and one coming out of Public Works? How is that working?
They are both coming out of the capital fund, actually.
They both did come in under budget. I'll note that.
Yes.
Okay. After no further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve a recommendation from Public Works Committee to award the Forest Park Beach Evaluation and Monitoring Maintenance Plan Development to Smith Group in the amount of $95,067 plus 5% contingency and the amount of $4,933 for a total of $100,000. Do I have a motion?
No. Second?
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
AKA, 0 and A, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes our committee reports. Next item on the agenda is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are 12 of them tonight. I'll try to read quickly. First is approval of the extension of the mayor's declaration of a local state of emergency until the next city council meeting. Second is approval of the April 5th, 2021 city council meeting minutes. Third is approval of an Arbor Day proclamation. Fourth is approval of fourth and fifth year of contract with Leinbarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson LLP for collection services. Fifth is appointment of an authorized agent for the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, also known as the IMRF. Sixth is approval of Metropolitan Alliance of Police Collective Bargaining Agreement between the city and Lake Forest police officers. Seventh is approval of the fiscal year 22 personnel policies administrative directives. Eighth is award of a proposal to DBM Services in the amount of $57,000 plus a 10% contingency of $5,700 for a total of $62,700 for the 2021 MSF Fleet Epoxy Floor Project. Ninth is approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award the contract for the Lake Forest share of the Joint 2021 Annual Street Resurfacing Asphalt Patching and Manhole Adjustments Program to Peter Baker and Sons in the amount of $1,085,000. Yeah, I'm sorry, $1,085,000. Ten is approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to award a contract to Gaywald Hamilton Associates to provide Phase II engineering design services for the Waukegan Road and Wesley Intersection Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $71,100. Eleventh is consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board, first reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. And twelfth is consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Zoning Board of Appeals, also first reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. Are there any items that any member of the council would like removed or taken separately? Okay. Jason, City Manager Wishe, I believe, would like to say something about the police contract?
Yeah, thank you. And I'll go quickly. I don't want to slow down the medium. We've made it this far, but I did want to just take a quick opportunity to acknowledge those involved in the negotiations of the new collective bargaining agreement with our local police officers. You know, I'm really pleased every time these come around to be able to, you know, share with the council, you know, these agreements that are able to be negotiated in good faith at the bargaining table, generally without the presence or need for any involvement from our labor attorneys. And the truth is, that doesn't happen by accident. And, you know, one of the things that I've really been so impressed by in my short time here is the strength of the labor management relationship in Lake Forest. And there's a lot of people who deserve a lot of credit for that because really, it's all predicated on trust and open communication, and those type of things are really cultivated over a long period of time. And so, you know, specific to this negotiation, obviously, we didn't shower her with enough accolades already. Tremendous credit to Duchesne as the lead negotiator for the city. And then also Chief Waldorf and Commander Mike Lang, and then along with Amber, who constituted the city's negotiating team. Carl is just a remarkable chief. We're very lucky to have him, along with the rest of his leadership and command staff. They really do just an incredible job in fostering such a positive work environment over there. And I think that camaraderie between, you know, the leadership and the troops, if you will, is palpable to anybody anytime you walk over in the building there. And that doesn't happen in a lot of places. So kudos to all of them. And then I also just wanted to take a chance to thank the police officers negotiating team as well. Mike Hughes, Troy DeBrees, Nisa Mai, and Steve Hutt. They really conducted themselves, again, in good faith and were very reasonable throughout this whole process. And again, my sincere appreciation for their efforts at the table, and quite frankly, for the efforts of all of the individuals that they represent in the union. I will say, we have, we are really blessed to just have such a tremendous police department, and particularly in the environment in which law enforcement more broadly is operating in today. It makes you appreciate all the more just the tremendous group of men and women we have. So my sincere thanks to everyone involved, and just wanted to make sure to acknowledge them for all their efforts.
Thank you. Well said. If there are no more comments, I would entertain approval, a motion to approve the 12 omnibus items as presented.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Karas?
Aye.
Alderman Rummel?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlag?
Aye.
Alderman Gashkarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Alderman Weber?
Aye.
AKA, 0 and A, motion carries.
Thank you. Well, the last item on our agenda is additional items for discussion and comments by council members. Any member of the council would like to speak about anything in particular?
Yeah, I would like to speak. Thank you for this time. Just reminding everyone that Earth Day is this Thursday, April 22nd. We had a little bit of an early celebration. A very successful beach cleanup occurred on Saturday. It was oversubscribed. We had to turn people away. We had to turn people away. But also, another wonderful aspect of this was that as people were on the beach and saw what we were doing, we had some other, some extra buckets. They picked up, they picked up buckets and joined us. We picked up quite a bit of trash. Some of it was very, were very small pieces, which just highlighted how plastics degrade and enter our waterways as microplastics and nanoplastics. We were blessed with some spectacular group leaders who also lectured us on the dangers of plastics in our waterways. And I just want to call out a couple of those if you'll give me the time. Marion Cartwright was one of our leaders from Green Mines, Peter Gordon from Lake Forest Open Lands, Reepki Droj from Green Mines, Julie Kinraid, Katie Anderson from the League of Women Voters, Joy Gascot Mueller and her husband Dave Mueller from the League of Women Voters, and they also serve on the Great Lakes League of Women Voters. So it was also just a wonderful coming together of all of our spectacular environmental organizations in our city to accomplish this mission. And it was just a wonderful day. The weather cooperated. It was a little chilling, but if you dressed, the sun was out shining on us, and so it was wonderful. And thank you also to the staff who supported this. Leila Werner was spectacular. There were several meetings that went into setting this up. She chaired those meetings. Mike Strong was always in the background also supporting it, and it was just a great event. So thank you very much. And then also, to all of my fellow aldermen, thank you for responding to my call to exercise your poetry reading talents and submit a reading to Green Mines for their poem that will be released on Earth Day. There was a poetry contest that was run by Green Mines, and there were many submissions from schoolchildren throughout Lake Forest. They composed absolutely spectacularly remarkable poems. One was chosen as a winner, and I know that all of the aldermen who had the opportunity to read that poem and recite some of its verses were also certainly impressed and taken with the poem and its beauty. So thank you for all of my colleagues in the city council for doing that as well. That's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sounds like a great event. So any other comments by council members? Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.